Yeah, it's, uh, it's past time and so let's call the, uh, the May twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen Planning Commission meeting to order. So first order of business is agenda changes. And I don't know of any, anybody else have agenda changes? Okay, we'll move on to public comments for non-agenda items. Nobody in the audience tonight, which means we're moving on to number three. Village growth area official map revisions, list of desired community facilities and infrastructure. I think is where we left off last time.
Yes, and my recollection of the conversation was, uh, take a step back and just think, brainstorm on, uh, community facilities and infrastructure that you'd like to see rather than getting hung up with where you want them to be. So I just circulated the list that came out, uh, ten years ago when we did the first official map. And obviously it's ten years old, so we've thought of new things since then and some things have already happened and but figured it would, might be a place to get your brains working. As I was thinking about it, I was rereading the town plan, the draft one, um, and I made a note to myself, which I haven't had a chance to do yet, is to look back at our past community surveys. We did some for this town plan as well as the some surveying in two thousand and three for the last town plan. There might be some information in there. And then my other thought was based on how the conversation tonight goes, I would, I would be very, uh, uh, happy to do, uh, and may do it whether you ask me or not, um, to do another quick community survey, you know, of the online variety, just to see what people are thinking now that the grass is green and people are thinking about being outside again. But what'd you all, what'd you guys all come up with, anything?
Well, the only real, I wouldn't call it a whole necessarily, but I mean certainly the idea of that community center under buildings, I mean that's morphed a little bit into, um, you know, we've called it other things, but it's probably somewhat comprehensive.
Yep.
The only other piece under buildings and maybe buildings and land, uh, that maybe should at least um, be acknowledged is the school itself. And whether, you know, what we have for school facilities long-term is adequate, both the school itself and the yard as a community facility. It's, it's questioned as much as anything else, but I think.
Yeah, I think to date our conversations about school capacity have been, we don't foresee the projected growth requiring any additional school facilities building-wise. But as Tom Air mentioned last, last, your last meeting, it sounds like from the community school standpoint anyways, the green space and recreation space associated with the community school is inadequate.
Yeah. So that was, that was one kind of facility that I thought maybe, um, needed some attention.
There was a time in the past you may remember when we talked about, we the community talked about possible additional school site up on the village northwest area.
Yeah, we, we designed a school for that location and actually went to a bond book.
Right, there was some serious consideration about where we acquire land up there.
Yep.
So I was thinking about non-fun stuff.
Okay, give us a non-fun.
Community stormwater, that's non-fun stuff.
Stormwater, uh, treatment areas?
Yeah, community stormwater treatment area. Perhaps, uh, a site for, um, you know, solar panels or energy. I said, non-fun stuff.
I, I had some ideas about adi- additional building facilities and that had to do with the town offices.
Yeah.
Additional doesn't necessarily mean another building on some other site. It might be an addition to this building itself. It might be a nearby building. I think the town owns land nearby. It wouldn't require, you know, purchasing land or limiting the use of that land. Uh, but certainly it seems like with the growth of the town and population and the constraints that I understand this building already has, you can speak to that better than I can, Alex, but, um, that we might, we might consider additional, uh, town office space.
And John, if it were, just to flesh that out, 'cause, um, I think a lot of us have our head stuck in the sand here at the town office about that. Uh, and I, I think you're actually, you have a good point, that we already, to some extent, we already need some more staff now. But we can kinda get along without it, but we lose people as a result more frequently and, um, you know. But as we grow, I think there's no doubt we're gonna need more staff and this building does have some limits. Um, from an official map standpoint, were we to do additional construction on the town property here, wouldn't play into the official map much. But to the extent that we might have to, or might wanna do an annex elsewhere, um, maybe we would wanna have it on the official map. At the very least, it might be something to add to chapter six of the town plan since the select board's still kicking that around. Um, and they talked about chapter six at their last meeting and gave me a whole bunch of revisions that they wanted to see done. Recognizing that some planning for additional, um, office space for municipal employees would be, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and since tonight our focus was gonna be talking about what additional facilities, not necessarily where they're located.
Right, that is in your mind.
Town, town office space came up.
Okay.
Some other items that I, I didn't find, I couldn't find on the two thousand and seven list. There didn't seem to be any mention and it's an existing facility and that's the Memorial Park, what I call the Memorial Park on, on the one sixteen curve.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't, I couldn't locate that on, on the two thousand and seven list, so, and again, it's there. We've recently planted some new trees. There is attention spent there. Um, but whether or not that needs to be identified, uh, as a, at least an existing community facility. Uh, the other thing I didn't see anywhere were playgrounds and equipment, uh, for little kids, toddlers. I could think of two. One on the community school site and one at the daycare center next to the community school. Both of them being really limited to the use of the school kids and the daycare kids. The daycare one is actually even fenced in. The rule that we've been told about the community school is that when school is in session, people from outside the school should not bring their kids to the playground there on the weekends in the evening. That's fine.
That has been identified time and time again as a, as a desired community facility, as a, as a young child, a young children's, uh, playground. So that's a good one to have on the list.
There is in the plans that were prepared for the, uh, fire station, police station plan, as you'll remember. On lot one, there was developed there a tot lot. But again, we haven't officially addressed it as the Planning Commission. One, one comment I had about the, the existing, say softball field at the community school now that Tom was pointing out, uh, in particular is damaged and compromised by water that comes off of the building, comes off of the bank and comes down across that, that field and every couple of years it has to be redone. I'm just wondering if there might be some existing, uh, ground construction, uh, you know, diversion ditch, something like that, that would intercept all of that water before it got to the playfield. Uh, and, and brought it around the sides. It could be brought to, uh, the, the part of the stream that flows past there. Uh, it could be brought to, uh, that on either side. I don't know whether that would be something that people would wanna see there, but it might allow that what I'm referring to as a softball field, the kids, the kids' ball field, uh, to be a more stable, usable facility uh, right there where the school is. Another item would be picnic areas where there's actually a covered pavilion, picnic tables, barbecue grills, restrooms. That all might be combined with something that's happening out at the new playfields. But there aren't any places other than wide open green spaces where you can put down a, a blanket or some low chairs and and have a little picnic, but there's, there's nothing more formal than that. And then some of, of the kind of fixed games that are, we talked a little bit about last time, uh, tennis and, uh, pickleball got included. Uh, so there's other things along those lines, horseshoes, uh, bocce courts. We were just, uh, Gene and I just spent the weekend in, uh, Rockport and, uh, they have public bocce courts and they, you actually, the balls are right there. They have them in a little container off to the side. You couldn't go and, it's not locked up. You can go and get the bocce balls and there's two, uh, zones of, of a playing area. I didn't see any horseshoe pitching, but horseshoes are popular around here.
Go to, uh, Oak ledge park in Burlington. They have bocce courts as well.
They have bocce courts there. Uh, and then finally one that there actually have been comments. A bunch of this stuff came from me talking to my kids and my grandkids and, and, uh, seeing things in, in Rockport, but this was actually on the town, uh, uh, front porch forum. Dog waste bag dispensers and garbage cans to get rid of those bags. Again, in Gloucester Perry and in Rockport, everywhere we went, there were little dispensing machines on a pipe that you could get a bag to pick up after your dog. There have been comments about the dog waste problem on, on Gillespie. So again, does the town put money into some on the sidewalks here in town, something at Gillespie? Uh, maybe when eventually we get a dog park, uh, that would seem to be an obvious place to, to have those kind of, uh, services. So that's, that's kinda, well, the, the final thing would be, we have green spaces, we have trails noted on this two thousand and seven list. We don't include the entire town, but there are all the heart trails. There are fellowship of the wheel trails up in the town forest. This is, this is a kind of a new, a new map, not an existing map. This is a new map. This is beyond the village, uh.
No, no, I'm just saying the, the official map is kind of for, for facilities we foresee, not facilities we have.
Right, but heart trails may expand. I know of several that people are talking about wanting to add. Those would be on a, a townwide official map. Uh, I don't know about the fellowship of the wheels, but I know that they're an active group and they, they use their trails a lot and whether they have desires for more that go beyond the town forest. Uh, I don't know, but a question.
Another thing I thought of is, is more community kiosks for news or events. I think we have one in town right now, you know, across from Lamens.
Do you think anybody really uses those though? Cause the last time I talked to Brian Bouger, I think, we were, he and I were both of the mind that they seem like, there's always stuff tacked to them, but I'm not sure that I've ever say, see anyone looking at them. And they seem like the, like the way to, the way of yesteryear to actually tell people about things.
I think if you get pedestrians walking, they're used. If you don't have, if you don't have pedestrian traffic, you're right, they're not gonna get used.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll write it down. I was just curious as to whether that was something of the past.
I'm a population of one, but I, I do go over and look for events. And I know that some of the groups that put on events post their, their little flyers there. The Harvest Festival, some of the stuff that RGH has done, uh, some of the stuff that the, uh, South County, County Chorus has done. They'll post there.
Oh, I know things get posted there. I'm just, I'm just a little curious as to how many eyeballs actually view it.
I only count as two.
Versus front porch forum and other, uh.
I'm not gonna walk from my car to Lamens parking lot.
I'll over to it to look at it, but if I was walking by.
I walk by and I never look at it, so I'm, I'm, maybe I'm just, maybe it's just my eyeballs.
But you're, you're in the know. I mean, you, I mean, you're already on the pulse of the community.
You have, right, you have so many inputs of what's going on.
I think what I found sort of hard about this was trying to gaze ahead, you know, any measurable distance anyway. But, you know, especially when it comes to one and two, the park and ride and the mass transit hub thing. I just have this, uh, you know, sense that, and probably we all do, that that stuff is in flux. You know, in terms of car sharing, in terms of autonomous cars, in terms of electrical charging stations, in terms of, uh, just, just what's happening in those places. Bicycle sharing, um, so not so much that it might not be accounted for in one and two, but maybe the nature of what happens there is fairly dynamic.
Yeah.
And being ready.
Does the town need a charging station in their parking?
For example, yeah. Um, and, and, you know, is it part of a park and ride, mass transit hub of some kind? Some of this is sort of in process, but trying to anticipate some of, I mean, you hear some of these futurists talk about automobile propulsion and, uh, you get the sense, hey, this is, this is gonna change, uh, the game as we know it dramatically. And what kind of accommodation, what kind of facilities do we need? To try to anticipate some of that, so.
Yeah, I think the vision of, of yesterday was that this park and ride was sort of a first attempt. And that the, the, the real one would be, um, a multi-use parking area uh, next to the police and fire station that could be used for parking for community events on the town green, overflow for fire department use when they have trainings, uh, parking for functions that happen at the firehouse when people rent the haul out. Uh, and that it could also serve as a place for, a central place for mass transit that we currently have to come and go instead of having to come here. It would be right off one sixteen and, and a, you know, general daytime sort of park and ride. Uh, but that's, that's all based on, you know, yesterday and today's mode of travel, whether that's the right kind of place, um, or facility for tomorrow. Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to know.
How much is the park and ride used today? Do we have any? And I only ask that question, not that it's not a, an important thing to have, but is it used enough to necessitate building a whole?
Another one?
Yeah.
I think that what, what drives the need for the other location for one is less the number of people, less the fact that this is full every day and more the fact that it would serve multiple uses. So if we develop that space behind the police and fire station as a town green and we have the farmer's market there if it ever gets rebooted someday, um, and we have maybe, uh, events there of some sort, or we install a playground, um, that that parking area could serve multiple purposes. Uh, this park and ride out back here I think has fourteen spaces and I wanna say it's about, it's about half to two-thirds full any given day. I, I almost never see it full. Um, so it's.
When the playground is being used for soccer.
That's true, absolutely. It fills right up.
So it's another one of those multi-use facilities.
But for purely daytime, daytime park and ride commuter use, it's, it's rarely full. But we also have gas prices that are what they were, you know, ten years ago. Were we to see gas prices go back to where they were for that tiny speck of time when they were up over four bucks a gallon, you know, I think we'd have a slightly different arrangement, which again speaks to the, the, the great unknown in the future.
Of course, the park and ride relies on people sharing rides in their own cars, but the ma- mass transit hub, the idea of being able to get onto a commuter bus that's going to Middlebury or going to Burlington would be more convenient if it were located behind the fire station. There was a loop drive that was set up that you, the bus could come in easily there and so forth. But that's connected to whether we have mass transit. What do we know about that part of the system? Is it?
Yeah, all we know is.
Is there enough ridership?
All we know is we have a commuter bus now.
Right, but.
That is, is, is just to answer the same question Jeff had about the park and ride, um, is not full, uh, on a daily basis. So again, I, uh.
Is that information available through the transportation company?
Their ridership?
We could find out what their ridership was?
Oh, sure.
Do they make projections as, are they trying to increase ridership or do they anticipate that?
The idea is that they're trying to increase ridership. That's why they've, uh, at least the CCTA portion, not the CCTA, the GMT portion uh, of the service, uh, this spring, summer is doing a trial balloon to drive up to, um, the Richmond Road, uh, north, um, North Road intersection to pick up all those folks on Richmond Road, that high density area. Um, and they're, they're, they're trying to build more ridership here as well. I'm not aware of what their projections are. I'm sure that they have some thoughts along those lines, but we're all community planners. Um, I've, I've, I'm now riding that bus, you know, once in a while, at least once a week or so. Uh, it's not going anywhere ridership wise, you know, unless something significant happens, either, um, well, something culturally happens, you know, either, either there's a financial reason like gas prices double or, um, there's a carbon tax or, or, which is the same thing, I suppose.
We build fifty more houses in Heinsberg where people are commuting to work in Burlington or Middlebury, so we're, we're a bigger hub ourselves.
That's possible too.
To create more ridership.
Well, it's more, I was anticipating, uh, sort of just a, kind of a marriage between, uh, the public transit format where, you know, you've got two hours, two times in the morning where you have to leap on this bus.
Yep, right.
Seven o'clock and seven forty-five. And if you're not in sync with that, um, or you got caught in a little traffic on Silver Street or whatever it is.
You drive in your car.
And then that vehicle goes to some general location in Burlington.
Yeah.
That for some people might be still a mile or two away from where they work, you know? And my hunch is that where we might be headed is a sharing vehicle of some kind that maybe still doesn't do individualized pickup, but it goes to Battery Street, you know, six people, uh, at varying times, you know, a little a, um, a hybrid of what we currently have, you know? Um, and I'm just, my sense was, okay, how do you anticipate what kind of public facility that we might need to sort of help with that?
Yeah, I think it's.
And who knows? Who knows?
I think you know, cause you're right. If the autonomous car comes into being and there's some other mechanisms that work such that every electric cars, such that nobody gets in the bus, they all stay in their cars. Then that vision of a transit system might be less, less likely than more likely. It's very hard to know.
Well, there are a lot of flaws in the transit system just by its very nature. You shouldn't really call them flaws. It's just inherent character.
Yeah.
That a lot of us, at least in our generation, are not wedded to, you know, or only occasionally.
Yeah, well, the only reason I'm riding it now is because it literally goes from a block away from where I live to this parking lot.
Yeah.
In the past, it was, it was
Yeah.
much more cumbersome to get to one, you know, one side of that commute or the other.
Yeah.
And how many people replicate your situation, live a block away from where it stops and come here.
Yeah, there's.
You know, does Missy come there? No, she doesn't fit.
Five on the bus that I ride. They don't come here though. They keep going to Middlebury.
The drone landing platform is what I'm thinking of, you know?
A larger drone. They're making bigger drones these days.
Drone delivery.
Right, they just drop you.
So, so Ralph, have you had any brainstorms as to what community facilities we should be considering, given the, these alternate futures we're talking about? Or, or you're just brainstorming?
Just really brainstorming. I don't profess to have any answer.
All right.
My comment on the community center and you alluded to it, we've talked about it different ways. There's been talk about a senior center. And there's been talk about a teen center and there's been talk about a senior and teen center.
Multi-generational, yeah.
A multi-generational, uh, center. Um, they all kind of fall under the category of
Community center.
Community center, but does, do they imply more than one of them?
What do you guys think? You, you know this town. Do you think this town in the next ten, twenty years needs or wants multiple community centers for different generations?
No, I don't think so. I think this whole notion of kind of multiple facilities is terribly wasteful.
It's terribly wasteful.
And segregation on a, on a, you know, of a kind that, um, um, doesn't seem healthy for all of us as we age, you know? We wanna be disturbed.
I think there's been some studies and experimentation where actually things are working well if you combine, you know, the functionality.
So I, I, I think it can be sort of one facility with little wings and stuff, but.
You know, like I think of the kids that use here for the, you know, the younger kids that do the, the plague, the plagueur.
Yeah.
Which is awesome. Our kids went to it and they loved it.
Yeah, our grandkids.
But I could see that going into one and then you have, you know, multi-generation, they can sit there and, you know, you got the kids.
I have that same sense that, you know, in some communities, the community center has the facilities for a, a playgroup for, uh, you know, cards, people who like to go and play cards, for kids who wanna go and play, um, role-playing games. Uh, and also space for, um, you know, small-scale rec.
Yep.
Whether it's an integrated basketball court inside or just a small gymnasium or, uh, or something like that. Seems like a, a community as small as Heinsberg with as few res- financial resources as Heinsberg ought, ought to be thinking along those lines as opposed to, I want the indoor pool here and the community center there and the, you know, rec area here, uh.
Yeah, I've watched South Burlington, say for example, I was sort of involved in those skating rinks there for, you know, twenty-five years ago. And the plans have been, you know, to build a senior citizen center, to build a indoor swimming pool, recreation facility. I mean, and every time, you know, it came, uh, to the point where the community had to step up and fund something like that, you know, it, it's really gone nowhere. It's only the private efforts that have actually, um, you contrast that with Charlotte and it seems like, um, you know, they've got a host of little municipal facilities all concentrated in one area and seems a little dreamy.
The Miller Center in, uh, the new north end of Burlington.
Yes.
It's near, it's sort of near CP Smith Elementary School and Hunt, is it Hunt? Um, middle school and then the Miller Center is sort of in that complex too. Only been in the Miller Center once or twice, but that struck me as that kind of a place, right? I think maybe you can have small kids' rec programs in there, but then it also serves for more general community use. And it's sitting next to a whole bunch of public green space, so things can happen outside.
In, in Charlotte, and I, I think I know a fair amount about what happens there in terms of public facilities. The library, which is on the town green, next to the town offices, next to the post office. That was built, uh, with money that was privately raised, fundraised. The town, uh, didn't put money into that. The population didn't put money into that. There were just numerous fundraising events that built that building. The, across the road, uh, fire station. That built that building, the, across the road, uh, fire station is across the road and then next to the fire station is the senior center. That was built mostly from money, from a do- single-family donation. A very wealthy farmer in Charlotte gave the money to build the senior center. Uh, and then on the other side of the fire station is a children's center, a daycare center. All of that happened, the post office was built with public money, the town offices was built with public money. Fire station was built with public money, all the others were built with private money, they're clustered together. I have to say about the senior center, I don't think any of those people would wanna have it for kids also.
Oh, really?
It needs, it need, it, they need to, there needs to be, you mentioned wings, there needs to be separation of those activities. The folks that go to the senior center, they even get bothered by our yoga group. Because we take up space too long where they wanna play bridge. And when they come in to set up their card tables, you get the evil eye from them because.
Wrong with the space, right? That's just scheduling problems, it sounds like.
Well, the schedule is there, but the bridge players are rabid, they were there this. They will be there Memorial Day when the center is closed, they have gotten the keys to get in so that they can meet and play bridge. That happens.
That's good.
Uh, it is, it's a very active place, they've got watercolor painting, they've got tai chi. They've got, uh, yoga, two different classes of yoga, they serve meals there, there's a full kitchen there. Twice, twice a week on Mondays and Wednesdays, they serve meals for five bucks, you can get a great lunch.
Good thing we have the high school.
It's a very busy facility, but it's very age-oriented. Uh, and it's not big enough to accommodate, you know, they couldn't do a daycare center half-day. In the room where we play cards, where we do yoga, where we do, uh, tai chi.
What we're talking about is a need for like a daycare center. You know, a smaller building, but it's got multiple rooms, you can have yoga in one room, you can have that room for bridge. Kind of like what we do here for booking meetings.
That's what you need, a bigger facility than in Charlotte. That's one component of a bigger facility, all in one place.
But then I also think it would be good, this is just me and maybe it's not good, but if you had, I mean, it sounds like that one gets used, maybe ours would just get used. But I think it would also be kinda nice to have a commercial thing, like a, a coffee shop with high-speed internet. That would draw different people in, so instead of just it being a senior center, you would get younger people, maybe after school and getting a coffee. And working on their computer or workers or, you know what I mean, it would get people to come to the building and see it and experience it and use it. Versus it's, would just kind of turn into the bridge players' building, you know.
Well, it's more than the bridge players.
But you know what I mean.
Right, to expand the, the use of it, you mentioned the high school, here we've got that great facility up there, there are gyms there. There are computers there, there are computer centers there, they do use it for adult education longer, uh, in the day. Uh, can't we work something out like that and use the elementary school, for example, more often? And I know that there's adult basketball in the, in the, uh, school, in the community school.
Well, that, I was just gonna ask that question in relation to your comment about the Charlotte centers sort of, um, uses bumping into each other. Um, cause there's always been a lot of talk about re- using, m- m- making more effective use of the community school property. But, given how much of the day that building, those buildings are occupied. And at least from a senior, you know, activities front, what portion of the day, um, seniors would like to be active? They seem to overlap. I, I'm just thinking of my own parents and, you know, by seven o'clock or so, they're, they're not interested in being out and about. You know, it's more morning and midday where they go out and do their community activities, um, exercise, all that.
Close to a senior housing, yeah, project, I mean.
Sure, or co-located with one, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it could be part of it.
Yeah, although sometimes those senior housing facilities incorporate something like that for, you know, the residents of the, of the, of the facility.
Make it for the.
You could, well, I think one thing we need to remember is, uh, you know, we are in a, we are in a village setting. And, and so to your point Jeff, as much as you might wanna see a coffee shop integrated into a community center to draw more. And different types of people, it, it might also be good just to recognize, well, we're gonna have that coffee shop just, you know, couple blocks down from the community center. Uh, you don't have to necessarily do it all in one, one place.
One drawback in Charlotte is that Charlotte is, doesn't have a village as dense as ours. And so everybody, I don't think there's anyone who walks to the community center. To the senior center, everybody drives and we use the parking behind the fire station. And across the road, as well as the parking lot that was, you know, approved as part of the site plan. Uh, we overflow a lot, particularly in those morning hours from like ten until one o'clock. Two o'clock, something like that, that middle of the morning, late morning and middle of the day. It's, it's well-used and wouldn't, it wouldn't be easy to accommodate as part of a school.
So what else did you guys have on your list? This is all good fodder, some of them we've already talked about in the past, but others not. Well, you want the skateboard cu- park to come back?
See, that was, there was an objection to, to the skateboarders because the neighborhood thought that they were gonna be a problem, right? On lot one.
Yeah, I guess, I, my memory's vague, I just remembered that. Behind the school, um, and then it just never got reinstituted anywhere. But boy, that one in Burlington, of course, Burlington's a big city, but that's a beautiful.
That's a great job whoever did that.
I mean, it's amazing, you've been up there?
Every time I go by it now, there, there's gotta be thirty or forty, well, maybe not forty, but you know, twenty or thirty. Not just kids either, kids and sort of young adults. Flinging themselves about or sitting there watching their children fling themselves about.
But again, you're drawing on a city center.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, which, which may be getting more dense even than it is now.
Yeah, alright, well anyways, I got it.
You could put down, uh, a get air place, a trampoline, uh, foam-filled pit. Has anybody been to the, to the get air place?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, go to that, that is so much fun. There are adults who are doing it too.
I've heard that somebody put one in up at C V U.
There's people there, every time I go out back.
It's funny, I, I, I play it once in a while, but I've never played this course and the one I play is in Williston, uh, behind their central school. And I only started last summer, I'm just shocked at how many people are out there every evening. They're all adults and it, it's like there's, there's a group at almost every hole, so it's, it's a twelve hole.
Frustrating than real golf, so.
They got water hazards out there in C V U.
We don't get no snow anymore.
My, my two big ones were, uh, the charging stations for electric cars, which I think we already mentioned. Um, it'd be nice to even see as some of the bigger commercial stuff comes in, we ask for that, like, you know, a Hanaford type or something like that. To have, make sure so many spaces are electrified, um, and the other ones I, I, I had. Is, is again goes to wireless hotspots, so, something for internet infrastructure, you know. Um, in a dream world, I'd like to see this all, you know, fibered up and done right, but. You know, it would just be nice to have more places you could go and sit down and, you know, work on your laptop, I mean, you've got Bristol Bakery, I think they've got it there. Um, but you know what I mean, it would just be good to have, to be wired up.
And do it at the library, they have fixed computers, but you can also go. At the library with your laptop and use their wireless.
But that's sort of thinking along those lines, it's sort of pseudo-infrastructure-ish, but.
Playground and stuff up at the beach.
You know what, we went to the beach all the time, we stopped because of the milfoil. Cause it's like you go there now and your kids can't even get in the water, it's just green goo. But you're right, there is a playset there, there's swings, uh, there's a little play slide area, so there is a child's. Yeah, that's on, on the Heinsburg side, right?
It's not in Heinsburg, but it's.
It's got a playground right there and then it's got the restrooms and the picnic tables and stuff, so.
Yeah, there, and this was a refinement of what were earlier lists, I tried to find those and they just didn't survive, but, uh. Uh, yeah, I, I think my, my, uh, philosophy in planning here is you start big and you sort of explode everything. And then, and then you, uh, after you talk about it, you've gotta bring it right back down to something that's more doable, practical, whatever. So I think we're exploding the list right now and then, you know, like we talked about briefly, there are some places where we need to bring it back together again. And say, well, these three things are gonna be in one spot if we're gonna put it on the map or.
Redo the official map?
Well, similar to this effort, I think we might relist all the things that this community needs and wants. Maybe prioritize them a bit and then indicate which ones should be on the map and which ones are really not.
There going all the way up C V U road.
Yeah, we've talked about that being sort of, uh, pie in the sky, ready to come off the map. Yeah, I think we talked about that being just a trail connection.
Center road, how do, how do people feel about, uh? That always seemed a little.
Which road?
It's called the Center Road, you know, goes along Wyman Park and in behind Lampman's and.
Initially it was thought of to connect the, the Lampman's parking lot with, um. Well, Papa Nick's, that there'd be an alternate means of egress for people who wanted to get out of Lampman's and go south.
So I always had a concern with that Wyman Park. Whatever it is, the Wyman Park Road, and then, which I know may never happen, is the Levine Hill. The, uh, road connection Levine Hill to the Mechanicsville, and I live there, so. But it's not because of that, I just, when I saw that initially, it was, for me, all I was seeing was, is there diverters of traffic. Through residential neighborhoods. Well, oh, right, so from Jersey, I'm gonna hit all that road on one sixteen, guess what, I'm gonna go cut up this way. You know, and I'm, and, cause I lived on a, a road before where it was like that. And cars would be booking down at forty, fifty miles and you're like, what is going on?
So, so the planning commission has had a lot of talks like that, yeah, it's, it's a concern. I guess what, what drives those connections is without them, we remain more or less a one-road town, one sixteen.
No, I mean, we've got, like, this one makes sense, you know, the new main road through town.
So, so somebody else's.
No, no, that's not it, because we're saying this was mainly gonna be commercial through here.
Look, it's, it's not commercial right here, what, what, what I would say though is, is whether people book up and down your road, right? Is a function of the, the design of the road, right? If you make it possible for people to fly down your road, they're gonna fly down your road, right? If you design a road in a way where they're not gonna fly down the road, right, they're not gonna fly down the road.
I guess maybe, maybe you're focused on the flying down the road part, my focus was more about, I see them as shortcuts, you know? And maybe I'm wrong, but you know, you're shortcutting. So the one through Lyman, the one by Lyman Park that goes behind, right, it's just a shortcut. The one that, and then the one, the C V U for rigs, maybe not as bad, cause it's a little bit longer, you'd probably be quicker to go the normal way anyway. This one I understand, and, and I would say this was a bad idea, is having the residential through the main road, I think that's a bad idea. And then this one I don't, is not great because it goes through the nature trails and the hikes and then you end up cutting through.
Neighborhoods full of kids. Again, I, I think it's how you design the road, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with it going through residential area, I, I've, I've used this. Example many, many times. And that is, try and get yourself from, um, Route Two, just east of Taff's Corners. Right, over to like Mountain View, and there's ways to do it, right, nobody's flying through there, I use it once in a while. Right, it's a residential, you know, it's a series of residential roads, and they're designed in a way that they curve. There are tight roundabouts, it's treed, there, there are all, you know, there are stops, a couple stop signs. There are all the visual cues there, right, to tell you, you know, you should not be using this as a high-speed shortcut.
But they will.
I think Jeff, the way we have designed, I think Joe's right, the way we have designed roads. Does, does, and, and you know, you look at, what, there are three, three little roadways coming into your neighborhood there, you've got Levine Hill. You've got Partridge Hill coming from the north, and then you've got your neighborhood, and they're all sort of about equidistant, the ends of those roads. Um, but we don't, you know, I, I think the notion of being able to sort of weave through. Uh, at a slow and rational pace, um, you know, this whole dead-end culture that we tend to live with.
And, and I don't want dead-end culture, but I'm just saying that, when I look at like, um. I always forget the name of the, the, the neighborhood right over here, the new one. You know, so you've got Creekside down there, I just don't know how, I think this is a good idea for the town, the main road that goes along one sixteen. I just don't know how it's gonna go through Creekside now, cause you've got kids, you've got dogs, you've got people walking in there and it's not turning.
I think we're having a road configuration conversation within a larger conversation about public infrastructure. Um, I, the, the only, which is fine, uh, the only example I'll give, cause I've been driving it a lot lately is, um. I, maybe none of you drive it, so this won't run true for you, but if you're coming from Winuski towards Burlington. And instead of going up the hill, you go on Riverside, everybody know Riverside, right? And you go past the old tortilla flats, it's Bluebird Barbecue and the Intervale and you keep going, you come to a light. And it's, what is it, uh, North Champlain or something right there? North Winuski, if you go straight through that light, um, on your way to the northern connector, to get to the new north end of Burlington. You go through residential neighborhoods and that road sees a ton of traffic because so many people wanna get to the new north end. And the section I'm thinking of, where the chubby muffin is, I don't know if you know that, the Boys and Girls Club is right down the road from that. And there's a park right next to that, and there's a long straightaway right there, which every time I drive it, I think. How do kids get from the Boys and Girls Club across to that park without getting killed? And they've put, they've put in, um, speed bumps and stop signs at every intersection, so as a driver. You just cannot build up speed without, you know, breaking the law. And then, the best thing that they did or didn't intentionally do is that when you get to the end of that street. It's a complete ninety-degree left turn. Hard left, there's no way you can do that fast, you almost have to stop. So there are, I think, I think there are ways to do it, I think there are also places where it doesn't make sense to try to do it. And so, your example Jeff of the connection to Levine Hill Road, I think is one of those where that could just come off the map. It doesn't even make sense to try to do it. Exactly, you're going to Levine Hill Road, which.
I, I guess, yeah, I just see the neighborhood.
Than what you're talking about in Burlington. And I, as somebody that lives here with young kids and we're trying to develop a walkable, livable town. It's becoming, you're like stuck on your one walk, because they go down to Mechanicsville and you got the cars going back and forth, I got one crosswalk. You know, my kids, that's the first thing they're gonna do is stop, but you know, and then you're gonna have Hanaford coming in with trucks. And then you, I just worry about the walkability. As the more cut-throughs you make, no matter how slow you're going, you've gone from a, a neighborhood street where your kids can play in the road. Or on the sidewalks or not, you know, versus.
I mean, it would've been nice to make that connector out behind where you could.
Is, you know, the, the, the community I went to school in as a kid, right, um, you know. It, it grew up in the, the mid to late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. There's a major thoroughfare, right? The town hall's on that thoroughfare, the park is on that thoroughfare. Um, a school's on that thoroughfare, the library's on that thoroughfare, it's one of the wider streets. There's also a lot of residences on that thoroughfare. There's also a lot of residences on that thoroughfare, it never felt uncomfortable.
But that's, that's not what these neighborhoods are.
And, and it, and it was a, um, i- it was a village area that, that, you know, grew up. You know, on its, I'm, I'm losing the word here, but, but it wasn't, it wasn't staged, it wasn't planned like that. It happened, but it's a very workable community, even though there's a, there's one of the more major thoroughfares. That I would point out in that whole village area that runs through it, so, you know, that's another example for me that. You, you can have connectivity and, and make it work in a residential zone.
I just think a mayor, a major thoroughfare, I'm thinking of one sixteen and yes, you can put up sidewalks, you can put up certain kind of crosswalks that make that safe. But that's different than, I live on a street that has no paint markings.
Okay, so, so, so let me, so let me, let me explain, this is not like one sixteen, right, this is a village road, right? Um, you know, that particular village has something like one sixteen, right? It performs more like one sixteen, frankly, residential right along there is not really. Does not really work and isn't really preferred, but there, there are other, you know, more major thoroughfares, you know, connectors. Right, that, that serve a community purpose, there's lots of community facilities around them, right? That still afford, you know, v- high degree of livability. I don't, I don't think, I, I just don't equate connectivity with lack of livability.
Well, I, okay, I don't see this as connectivity, I see this as cut through, I, you know, but.
Okay, I very much support Jeff's position on this. There is no reason in the world to have roads that go through his neighborhood. Having those roads serve only that residential neighborhood is totally the right thing to do. What are we connecting? We're connecting from Mechanicsville Road. What, all the way eventually over to Buck Hill Road, if we get on Levine Hill Road and we keep going along the ridge there. We, we get to Buck Hill, there's nothing to go to, so all you're doing is, is connecting two points. And if you have a connection, no matter what the design of the road is, it will have a volume of traffic. It may be moving slower, because it's got road bumps, it's got curves, but there's a volume of traffic. That's moving between two points that weren't connected before. I don't see any reason to connect this neighborhood to anything other than Mechanicsville Road. And so you go in and you come back out, that's what happens at Creekside. You go off of one sixteen into Creekside, there's not dead ends. But you can't get out of Cree- Creekside except to go back onto one sixteen, which works really well for that neighborhood.
Right, so, so let me just clarify, because I agree with Rolf, that we don't want just a bunch of dead-end cul-de-sacs everywhere. And I agree with you that connectivity is good, I guess what I'm trying to say is. Where we put these connectors, we need to think about, because there are developments that have come up. That were put in in such a way that don't. Aren't really suitable for being part of a connector road, I guess is my point.
Like, they weren't designed, or especially the roads weren't designed with a through road in mind.
And they've, and the people that have moved into those areas, like Creekside and, and the Thistle Hill area up there. Um, you know, and who lived back here by Lyman Park in the condos, you've got kids running around and they're used to, this is the neighborhood and we're gonna do all this. So, maybe move the connector up here where there is nothing and you've got, you know?
Okay, so, so, so the, the realistic, realistic thing is, right? If, if, if you're talking about connecting existing re- you know, uh, infrastructure, you have a small chance of making it happen. The longer your non-existent infrastructure it is, the less likely it is to ever happen, right? So really, so, so really what this discussion boils down to is whether you wanna be a one-road town or not. And, and if, if you think that just one sixteen is workable, great, let's leave it that way.
But that, I, I'm okay with this type of road and I'm okay with the connectors, but I'm just saying the way these were laid out, right? Is you're connecting in through parts of the village that. Don't really, aren't gonna support that kind of thing, and what you're gonna end up doing is impacting home values. And impacting livability in those areas for the fact of having what, for me, is gonna end up being nothing more than a cut through through rush hour. And I'm not saying one, well, one-road town is what we want, but I just say we need to think of.
Through the rush hour, if, if you think about somebody having to make, you know, let's, let's say somebody went to Lampman's, right? And they went out this back way and they wanted to make a left on one sixteen. Is that any better situation than it is now when they actually have a light?
Well, I watch people today cut in at the uh, at the cheese mill and cut in and come back on this road, just get over here.
That's a terrible road, talk about speed bumps.
You know, and I.
The other, you know.
I just think we need to be more thoughtful of what's there and what we're connecting, is all I'm saying.
Right, but I think, I think it's also possible to be considerate. But also to make improvements such that it's possible. Cause I hear this from Kyle Bostwick with regard to Cree- the Creekside neighborhood and some of the other landowners there. And the, the argument seems to be, um, there is no way that, that anything could happen here. To make it acceptable to have through traffic. And I think of all those neighborhoods in Burlington that see lots of through traffic where they've installed. Ball bouts and stop signs and speed bumps and geometry reconfigurations. In a way to slow and calm traffic such that the kids can still play in, on the sidewalk and not have to worry about a car barreling down at forty. Cause they can't physically go more than twenty-five, uh, and in some cases, you can't do it, right? The road was so designed so much for a residential street with such straight and narrow that, you're right, it's impossible, but. I, I'm not convinced it's always impossible if you happen to have a pre-existing neighborhood.
But just because it's possible to make the connection, doesn't mean it's the thing to do.
Absolutely.
How many times have your friends and neighbors who live on dead-end roads say? It's so nice here, there's no through traffic. People come into this neighborhood because they live in this neighborhood, not because they're trying to go between. Their house and the dump, or one part of one sixteen to another part of one sixteen. They like, they covet, they value the dead-endness of their neighborhood. I don't think, I don't think we need to connect.
There are lots of wonderfully vital urban areas in this country, suburban areas, village neighborhoods. That have that kind of connectivity that I think Joe's talking about, uh, that don't necessarily always, um, you know. Granted, you, you live with something for a while, it's, it's like imagining sort of somebody going up your driveway and out somewhere else, you know? I mean, once you've got it, you, you don't wanna change it, that's for certain, but I, I.
On Lewis Creek Road.
Which is a thoroughfare.
And that becomes a thoroughfare on the weekends. Uh, it's very different during the week, two or three cars on the road during the week. Other places in the world, I agree, have that configuration, the question is, do we want that here? And do we need that here, and I'm saying in these two locations, as Jeff is pointing to. The one, the one, the one that goes by Lyman.
Will live with whatever the, you know, whatever the consequences are.
The one that is here going up Thistle Hill that's opposed to connect through Levine Hill Road.
The two that you think are, are, don't really have a need driving them are the connection to Levine Hill Road and that center road thing behind, near Lyman Park.
I've never been a big fan of, of this connection either, but. This piece right here, yeah, well, this, this I think will take care of itself.
I, I do sort of, I, you know, not to get anthropomorphic on this, but there's no question in my mind, one sixteen is an artery. Uh, that you can only pass tho- so much blood through and I, either we change the nature of the blood, you know? Uh, or we've got to have sub arteries of some kind, uh, that take traffic or take how we circulate. In a different way, in a more modest way, in a more, uh, in a way that's acceptable to all of us, you know, as sort of neighborhood livers. Whether, whether these, whether these are, you know, correct or not, I'm not arguing about, I am saying though, that the viability. Of this sort of linear nature of circulation through our village, if we keep going with the method of transportation that we're currently utilizing. Is not gonna fly, in fact, what's gonna happen is, we're all gonna be shopping on the internet. Nobody is gonna wanna, you know, at certain times of the day, is sort of jump onto that artery to try to get to Fred's house. Um, wherever Fred might live, because we're just saying to ourselves, no, it's, it's not worth the hassle, you know? Uh, I'm just gonna stay home, you know, I'm gonna become a little hermit, you know, and I.
Discussion we had about whether we needed a uh mass transit hub, because the nature of transportation. Was changing, so we were gonna hold off, we were gonna. Hold off doing anything major in terms of creating a transit hub. Let's, let's do the same thing here with these, these roads that cut through our existing neighborhoods.
Okay, the, the thing is, the thing is with, with an official map is, right, you're not gonna do this tomorrow, more than likely, right? You're thinking about it, you know, twenty, twenty-five years out, right? And you're putting it on a map because, right, you wanna let everybody know that you're thinking about it. And if something happens, you know, if, if the owner of the land, you know, between. You know, Levine Hill and, and Mechanicsville decides that, that, that they want a hundred-house subdivision in there, right? Right, you want, you know, you want this connector at least considered, and then, yep, at that point, the town has some decisions to make. Right, it can, it can either live up to the map or it can say, well, yeah, just kidding, um, not gonna stand in your way.
I, I guess maybe I look at connector differently, so I'm understanding what you're saying, but. When I think of living in this town, I think of connections, like if I wanna go from C V U, uh, to wherever. Uh, Lampman's, I use the hills from my house to go up, down, through, back by James House and, and to Lampman's, I walk, that's the connector. You know what I mean, I'd like to see that as the focus, is how, I live in the village and I wanna get from there to there, I don't think about, I'm gonna get in my car and go.
I think that's.
Think how do I get there?
Yeah, you walk or get on your bike.
Yeah, and that's why I see this as more focused on traffic mitigation of one sixteen than the village.
On, on a positive front, by having some of these, and maybe, you know, the west side is easy, cause there's not much there yet. What, what it does help is preventing, uh, how many could you fit in there, one, two, three, four? Five more Creeksides from going in, one right next to the other with no connections between them at all. Because everybody wants to live on a dead-end, you know, sort of neighborhood, and this says, no, we wanna have connectivity through there. It would be, I think it'd be interesting if everybody had your philosophy and we didn't need roads to connect those neighborhoods. All we needed were twelve-foot wide, you know, multi-use pathways. But at least the reality of the next planning period, you know, ten to twenty years, we're all in our cars, so we need to have both.
And I said, this makes sense. I, I mean, I don't know what to say about that, it's gonna be tough for the people in that neighborhood, but I'm just saying, if we know there's nothing here that's gonna connect.
Right.
And just, connect up here, connect where you're not, I don't know.
I think there's, I think there's middle, middle ground in there by, by, by saying, listen, the connections that don't go anywhere. That don't provide any, any real connectivity could come off the map, and the ones that are seen as being necessary and having a real value. Could, could stay on the map.
There are other issues in terms of how much gets developed up here that we address in our zoning regulations. And there's not gonna be a under development up here.
It's not in the service area, it's not.
Something different, but not up here, this is, this is a lower density area.
Well, and that was part of why the Center Road, uh, came onto the map is because when, when the planning commission did some visioning. Uh, this wasn't meant to be just a shortcut or just an exit for Lampman's. It was also thought that maybe someday the Russell property and the backside of Kelly's Field property would be developed further.
And now Russell is conserved.
No, 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 it's not, not in the village area, the village portion of their property was not conserved. The land trust wouldn't allow it, um, because it had, it was part of a, you know, a village growth area. So, I don't know that the Russell family will ever want it to be developed, but that was some of the thought. And actually, there was thought that Lyman Park, should the school be able to go elsewhere for its rec needs. Could also see some development around it as well, maybe a smaller, more, um, structured park. As opposed to just one big green area, so there was thought at that time that the Center Road could facilitate more economic development. More, as opposed to this Levine Hill Road neighborhood connection, which, uh, from day one. Even if you look back on this two thousand seven document, it's listed as, um.
N C.
Yeah, N C, not critical, uh, cause I, I think people realized it was probably not gonna go to any future.
Should've built a road along the gas pipeline.
Then we could've went all the way around.
What else do people have for this list we are creating?
This is a pretty good conversation, it's interesting, this urban connectivity thing is a, is a good one, I've heard some planners talk about this issue.
Well, has anybody ever been up to Morrisville? You know, it totally bypasses the village now, but people say the shops are actually busier now. Because, like you said, they're not worried about all the traffic and they, you know. It actually works good, actually.
Interesting, cause oftentimes.
I mean, they built across that huge river, I mean, that was a long bridge.
Yeah, I've heard in the, in other areas though, that you can also shoot yourself in the foot that way. Because what, the reason why businesses like Kenny Drugs and others wanna locate here is because of the eyeballs that go by them every day. But I think.
But people don't wanna go by there when there's bumper to bumper traffic.
Well, I think S six Junction might be another good case study on that front, right, because the, the one part of the cirque that was built. Was the part that bypassed Five Corners and did, that, that did reduce traffic at Five Corners. Did, did the businesses dry up and blow away?
And keep building new ones.
I don't think they did, so.
You gotta look at the nature of the businesses too.
Well, and the total traffic volumes, those are huge, huge volumes.
If, if I look at businesses right around Five Corners. They're, you know, they serve the local populace, right? And you look at Lincoln Inn, okay, what does Lincoln Inn do, right, it catches the traffic coming out of G F at four P M, that's what it does. It's pretty local, so.
Well, on the connectivity front, the neighborhood where I live.
Now, um, if you ever get down to the south end of Burlington, um, where Home Ave comes off of Shelburne Road. And, um, trying to think of the boundaries of it, but it's sort of Pine Street on one side, Shelburne Road on the, on the other side. And, um, and that Home Ave, uh, it is, is a complete block network. There is a street, every, it, it is the most connected little neighborhood and it's, it's amazing. It's just a great little neighborhood to walk around in, bike around in, um, and yet it does have certain sort of. Certain of those roads are much higher volume, you know, Pine Street, Shelburne Road, and then the ones, i- interstitial ones are there. But they don't see as much traffic, but they're still there, so, there's all sorts of, you know, examples of pros and cons. Uh, on the connectivity versus bypass side of things.
Since we're still talking about connectivity, in, under the sidewalks and bike paths area, there were a couple that I didn't quite understand. At the bottom of the list is Mechanicsville Road and C V U Road, Post Office to Library.
Right, and it says U W, project underway, that was the rec path project.
Where, show me where that.
From the post office.
From the post office.
From the post office up Mechanicsville Road to C V U Road and across by the high school over to the library.
Okay, then the last one is Mechanicsville Road East Side, Thorn Bush Road to the Village Center Plaza. So, we're talking about Mechanicsville Road. Down to here, but by going on Mechanicsville Road.
Just Mechanicsville Road, just Mechanicsville, this is Thorn Bush Road right here.
Right.
So from Thorn Bush Road to the Village Center, which is here.
Oh, that's the Village Center Plaza.
It's confusing, cause Heinsberg Center is the Bristol Bakery and the Heinsberg Village Center is. Grateful Dog grooming and sweet yoga, that, that, that just refers to one small, uh, gap.
Right, that one stretch of sidewalk, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
So I guess, uh, oh, I guess technically Commerce Street is sidewalked on one side.
Yeah, it's got, also have one small gap on the south side, uh, which Hannaford will put in if they get, if they actually go in. In front of, between Dark Star and, and, uh, the National Bank of Middlebury, there's no sidewalk.
And again, this is going outside of the village, but there's been all this discussion about a s- a sidewalk or a trail or something from the high school all the way up to north, the north road intersection.
On the Richmond Road.
On the Richmond Road, trying to find a way to go up there.
That's on my list of things to, to add for sure, cause we just did that feasibility study or sculpting study last year, the year before.
And then I've got a note here, Falls Road to the library, what was I talking about there? I guess just this, this area right in here at the intersection of one sixteen and this potential r- road. There's, there are not sidewalks right there.
Well, there are actually, there's, there's pretty good sidewalks from, from, uh, friends, what is it? Pleasant View down to the intersection on the Jiffy Mark side.
On the other side, it's just in front of the, uh- New-
The doctor's office, yep.
Uh, health center, and it doesn't go out to the corner.
Cause there's nothing to connect to at the corner yet. It goes to a crossing that gets you to, um, Ballard's.
Right, but having nothing to connect to doesn't necessarily mean that we don't put it on this map. We've just had this long discussion about-
Right, no, no, it is on the map currently, um, as a future sidewalk.
That's what these little, the little red slashes- Slash marks, and meant to go all the way to the corner.
Yeah, yeah, this map shows, um, future sidewalk on both sides of one sixteen, all the way up to CVU Road, and both sides of CVU Road, uh, on the west, all the way, uh, to that intersection.
Well, that I see listed on our, on our old list, but I don't see th- th- this one on, on that south side.
This list was a list from October of two thousand seven.
Right.
Between October of two thousand seven and May of two thousand nine, when this map was adopted, yeah, more stuff got added.
Okay.
This was just the, the original brainstorm.
I thought you had gone back and included some of that stuff on this list.
I just gave you the original brainstorm.
Just the two thousand seven, okay.
That was some of these future trails we've done.
Right.
And the, the paths and trails are not meant to be paved areas? And sidewalks and bike paths were meant to be paved, is that some, a distinction that was? I mean, it's not on the list indicating that, but-
Yeah, I don't think it was, I don't think that was discussed necessarily as a, as a-
A difference between those two?
I, I think that's a logical way to think of it, but I'm not sure that was the original, um, I don't think they were exclusive that way.
Sidewalks maybe were always paved, bike paths maybe?
Yeah, and some-
Kind of thing.
Yeah.
Trails not paved, rec paths?
Yeah, maybe, who knows?
Don't we have a fast trail through town?
We do, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, there's another map-
Somewhat diminished from two thousand seven, but-
The dog park is really getting some lobbying over here.
No, that's dog park, not park.
Okay, any other, uh, any other items on your, your lists? Okay?
I don't have anymore.
Thanks, John.
Okay, so probably where we go from here is to, as you said, Alex, to try and look at the list and, and maybe rank the importance or something like that, to try and figure out what's actually gonna go on the map. And limit our, limit ourselves, and-
Where?
And then where, right? What, and then where?
Yeah, I, I know, I think this would be a relatively straightforward thing to reach out to the community, maybe in the, in the middle of that, to say, here's some ideas that are floating around from the past and now, from the current planning commission, on community, future community facilities and infrastructure. Maybe ask community members to, to, uh, add to the list and/or rank.
Yep, I'm sure, uh, Community Stormor will come out on top.
It's not as sexy as a park with a playground, but-
It's not fun stuff.
There are a lot of people who, who, uh, think that it's important, I remember that from past surveys. I'm not saying that that survey would necessarily dictate what you guys wanted to put on or off the map, but it might illuminate you to which items are getting a lot of interest and which items you forgot.
Right, yeah, you know, I, I think it's a great idea.
It would also give you some time to, to take a, take a breather on this. You've talked about this, I think, at four or five meetings, uh, maybe get some feedback and then finalize it after you get the feedback. In the meantime, move on to some other stuff.
Okay, well, speaking of moving on to some other stuff, do we wanna move on to the next agenda item? And that is the energy plan.
Oh, right, so, um, as the agenda even indicates, I, this is, I wasn't intending this meeting to be a, a knockdown, drag-out discussion of this, but more just passing out the information in printed form and, um, introducing you to what the Regional Planning Commission is working on, uh, and, and pointing your attention at some of the questions they asked in their memo.
Yeah, I mean, it, it did look like they took some of our feedback from last time.
I think they absolutely did, um, and if you look at the text version, the first few pages of, of the memo, there's a table where it indicates what the state level constraints are and what Heinsberg indicated, and I think they, they pretty much nailed it, based on what we said. Um, what I can tell you is that, uh, having discussed this with, uh, the various groups or committees at the Regional Planning Commission level, um, I had been advocating, as I think the commission did back in October, that rather than trying to have maps show where you should put these, these renewable energy facilities, we, it should be, it would be better to have maps showing where not to put them, and just allow the developer to figure out where they should go, um, based on that. They, these maps do a little bit of both. They, the, the regional planning staff seems to be now moving a little bit more in the direction of focusing on the constraints, and less the, the, you know, here's the prime spot where you wanna put it. Which speaks to one of the questions they asked, which is, the state has outlined a list of preferred locations for these energy generation facilities, um, and they include existing structures, uh, parking lots, brownfields, gravel pits, quarries, um, la- old landfills. And their question was, this was on page two of what they sent out, uh, has Heinsberg identified any other sites that the municipality would like to see as preferred locations, um, so that they could try to indicate those on the map? So if you, you know, between now and your next meeting, if you think of places in town, um, one of their examples was, for example, a site at, uh, where a solar project is actively being investigated. Guess what? The McGee Hill Road solar array is in an area that if you look on these maps, is not supposed to be a prime spot for a solar array. Doesn't have any constraints necessarily, it's just doesn't happen to be in the, in the-
It's not self facing.
It's not self facing, exactly. Um, so, that might be one that we actually call out and say, you know, existing location, uh, that was another issue I brought to their attention, is that the way that some of these maps read, they identify prime solar and wind, and I said, there are places that w- we know are good for solar that are not falling into your prime category, because they don't happen to be south facing, but you put a solar panel on a rack and point it south and it still works.
So how'd they come up with this?
Uh, so the state gave them some guidelines, um, and I believe that for the solar, prime sort of solar areas, uh, it's, it's all about south facing areas, it's just about aspect. And for wind, it had to do with their, their, um, wind speed maps, and areas that had, uh, you know, decent wind speeds.
Looks like that area was indicated for wind. If you follow it along?
This is McGee Hill Road up here.
No.
Yeah, that's not where it is though, it's, the solar area is right in here.
No, I, I was saying the wind area, you know, you get up, this is the wind map.
Yeah, yeah, the purple is up off of Sherman Hollow Road. It's the, it's the height of, it's the highest, uh, yeah, areas.
These are amazing maps.
Yeah, they're a little, they're a little confusing. We've, we've made that clear to the, the drafters that, um, that when they go with the final maps, it might be nice to re- re- um-
Upscale them.
Well, take out some of the data layers and maybe make a couple of extra map sets, because putting this much data on one map, with all the overlays, it becomes hard to know what you're looking at.
And they're accurate?
You did this one that Jeff is staring at, that had, that had like the prime wind locations, and then, and there was hatching on the pri- I, I think it is the prime wind locations that are, are powered because of some constraint.
Local possible constraints, right.
Yeah, it's a little hard to interpret, yeah, cause there's, what they did was, they said, steep slopes of twenty-five percent or greater are a Heinsberg, don't build there. So in the purple areas for, on the wind maps, you're gonna see some sort of tan inclusions that are those twenty-five percent slopes.
Right.
But then, over on top of all of that, you see this striping, which is our core wildlife habitat, which is a, you know, minimize impact on, local, you know, possible constraint. So you have the overlap of what is, you know, potentially a good area for wind, but you can't develop, you can't do some of it, but you can others, but then you, you probably shouldn't do much anyways because of this other constraints.
Right, like this whole area has the diagonal lines on it.
Right.
As does the green, uh, there's a little bit that doesn't right there.
It looks like they only partially mapped it though, doesn't it? It, you know what I mean, if I think of this as like a map, like a radar thing, if they were doing wind speeds, it looks like they just, you know, where the, you can see where it's really detailed.
Yeah.
And then other parts, like over here, it's like they're bothering.
I think they're bothering down in the little-
Yeah, they just went up to the highest points, put it, mapped it.
Yeah.
Well, so it's, uh, I believe the data set is, is comprehensive for the whole area, but you, what you're seeing in purple excludes certain, um, state no-go areas, so, um, some of those get chopped out. In any case, the maps are-
Also, when you're looking at them online, you can go in close on them.
You can go in a little bit, you, they're not, they are a static map and they are at a certain resolution, so I've tried to go really far in and-
And it just turns into fuzz.
It just turns into fuzz, yeah. Yeah, it's all based on GIS, so, you know, I, we could look at them in much more detail. But remember, this is why tonight's introduction is important, um, these maps are not intended to be, um, uh, completely site-specific. In fact, we talked at the regional planning le- level about trying to introduce more language about how these maps should and should not be used, and how especially with the possible constraints, um, there, there just has to be onsite delineation of those, right? You can't know whether or not you're gonna have an impact on, on wildlife habitat unless you go and look at the habitat or ag soils or, yeah.
I mean, as far as other sites where, where energy facilities should be cited, I can think of two. One is really easy to define, the other one's hard. The easy one to find is things like wastewater treatment facilities that have, you know, that have land and it's a co-location and, you know, it doesn't make it look any worse between a wastewater treatment facility and a solar facility. And the harder one is, we discussed this before as a board, is we really wanted to put solar facilities where they're topo, you know, topographically, you know, shielded, right? From, you know, view, and, and, you know, I would define that as, you know, view from, from public roads and things like that, you know? So that they're there, but they don't really deserve the, you know, the pastoral image of Vermont.
Which one's that, where, where is it?
All the way to-
Right across from the golf course.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's not being, I don't think they use that anymore.
Yeah, one of the pits-
They're actually trying to sell it.
Yeah, one of the pits over there is owned by Gardener Construction, um, and that's not Lynn and Marie Gardner, diff- different gardener. That one's, they're just looking to sell it, maybe subdivide it for residential lots. There is one owned by Heinsberg Sand and Gravel that's actively being used, um-
But like a site like that, you wouldn't see them, it'd be-
Well, and that's why the state has identified those as preferred locations.
Yeah, if you were driving on one sixteen, you'd have to be looking right, right there before you'd be past that site.
Anybody think of any other good spots for throwing solar, aside from that list I ticked off? That's something specific to Heinsberg that wouldn't, that wasn't on that list.
Maybe, maybe I just would eat hillkin.
That would work. Only gets killed by a solar dam.
I like the wastewater facility idea. The landfill's obvious.
I think existing structures-
Is the, uh, cross-country track behind CVU. You know where the fire bond is?
Yeah.
That's pretty hidden in there too.
Okay, CVU backyard.
And what about flat-roofed buildings that were not necessarily designed to hold solar panels, but in fact, if they were analyzed, might be capable of doing that? I think of CVU itself-
Existing structures.
Free cast T system that may very well have capacity.
Yeah, that's a state, already a state-specified preferential location, existing rooftops of any sort.
Period, so we don't need to-
We don't need to identify that.
Flag goes for Heinsberg.
No, they're looking for other places, like maybe there's a municipal property that the community thinks would be a good place, but they wouldn't have known about, cause it didn't fall into one of those categories.
But it seems like they keep trying to take stuff away from you for putting in solar. I mean, if you didn't sign up before this year, they take away, you get charged so much for Greenmount Power just to-
Oh, right, yeah, the in- the incentives are, are, have been reduced over time.
So it doesn't seem like they're really promoting it.
Do they manage any of this stuff?
It depends who they are, right? Uh, but I think there was always an intent to have the incentives start big and tail off as you went over time, as the technology became cheaper and the cost to bring this energy market-
Want to raise their rates because they're paying out money for solar credits.
Right. I, I don't know all the po- the policy behind that. So aside from thinking of other preferential places, so we can be proactive and positive about, here's where we think good places would be, um, just take a look at the, at the other questions in the memo and, and the maps, and, uh, obviously, I think one thing we really wanna make sure of is that, uh, if, if, if these maps are likely to become, and these, these constraints are likely to become sort of a surrogate for our input into the PSB process, we don't wanna miss something critical, you know? Like, oh, well, if we'd only thought about it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have, we would've said, that's a, that's a difficult area, don't put them there.
So feedback to the, uh, the Regional Planning Commission needs to be done like mid-June.
Yep.
So we have one more meeting where I take it we're gonna beat this up.
Yeah, that's my hope, is that, uh, the Energy Committee's gonna talk about it on the sixth of June, and then you guys can talk, had the final discussion on the fourteenth, and I can wrap it up and get the feedback to them a couple days later.
And, and the Energy Committee confirmed that they can meet on the sixth to, to, that can be on their agenda.
Yeah, I talked to Chuck, he was game.
Do we have any idea how, you know? You know, how these definite constraints, and I, I'm using the wrong words, but, you know, the-
Known as possible, yep.
Yeah, I mean, how that's really gonna get handled in the end?
I think, I think that, uh, that was one of the questions that, um, that was posed in the memorandum was, you know, do you want the regional plan, the ECOs plan, to be very specific about prohibiting energy generation in these areas of known constraints? Um and the feedback, at least at the at the subcommittee level at the regional. Uh commission was that, yes, we did wanna be prescriptive that way. It's gonna be that way, I think it's basically good, the input to the PSB is gonna be. If it's in a known constraint area, please don't allow it to be there, if it's in a possible constraint area, please require somebody to go out and have.
See, that's the one I'm asking about, I mean, the the known constraint area, I I'm almost making the assumption, you know, especially the way that. That our zoning regs are written is that that's a no-go area.
Right.
Right? Possible is 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 kinda like our, you know, our secondary resources, you know, for our rural areas and.
Right.
And it's allowed, right, but we wanna minimize it, but you know, the 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 concept of minimization really isn't.
Right.
There yet in this, so.
Yeah, so how is that gonna be interpreted?
Right, just possible, you know, I mean, either either borrow it or totally ignore ignore the thing, or is it some compromise?
I think from the regional plan level, we should give them feedback as to how we want the regional plan to be worded in that regard. But I the input I've heard thus far is they uh they're thinking that they want the language to basically say. If 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 this is an area with a possible constraint, um there has to be. Additional study and delineation um in order to. A determine what the actual boundaries of that constraint are, because these maps are too broad to be fully accurate. And B to minimize, and then the question is, you know, how what does that mean? Does that mean that you can still have an access road up to the top of Texas Hill and place? Six wind turbines up top there, as long as the road is minimized and the actual impact of each of the wind turbine pads is as small as possible. Or does that mean you can't have it up at the top of Texas Hill, you gotta have one that's sort of. Close to the road so that the intrusion into the core habitat areas, you know, as minimal as possible. We should, we should clarify that, especially on the wind front, cuz I think that nobody's thinking about Texas Hill and wind. But we should, based on the way these maps are coming uh and showing that those areas have potential. I I'm sure other Chittenden County communities will be much specific on that front, cuz. Solar is basically a walk in the park, wind is the one that that drives, you know, a lot of the controversy.
Meaning in in the end, are are they, you know, cer- certainly our our constraining areas are different, but. Are they are they conglomerating all the concerns of the towns into one thing, or is this like, you know? Every town has its own section of the plan and you live.
I think they are actually, um as far as the mapping goes, I think they are actually respecting each town's sort of mapping. What they are doing is a consistent analysis that you saw in some of these tables about what your targets might need to be. And within those targets, you know, how much prime real estate do you have available for solar and wind? Ultimately, that's how they've described it, is that when they go to the the Department of Public Service after the regional plan has been updated with this. Improved energy section and say, we want our regional plan to get substantial deference in front of the PSB. Is it acceptable? The Department of Public Service is gonna look at this and say. Great, is there enough room in Chittenden County for all the solar and and wind and other renewables to meet the target for twenty fifty? And if we can say with a straight face, yes, there is, they'll the plan will be confirmed.
Right, now 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 towards that end, one of the comments we had when we went around this last time was was, hey, if we're giving up land. For all this, you know, how can we be assured that it's for our energy credits and not for?
Yeah, that has not been talked about at all, so I can I can bring that to, I mean, we can reiterate the comment.
But can a town vote, have a vote, say they don't want it in their town at all?
I think they can.
No commercial wind.
Right. I think they can, I think the the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, it it, you know, wants to. Recognize that some communities are better suited than others for commercial wind. The problem is if we all say that, if every community in the county says that, then. We might not meet the state requirements, probably won't meet the state requirements. Even with the change in administration, with the, you know, the current governor being a little less enthusiastic. No, I think they, I think the I think the standards under Act one seventy-four talk about the full sort of sco- uh. Variety of renewable, yeah, including hydro and uh. And efficiency gains and all of that, that's why you see in some of these tables, you know, targets uh for. Energy efficiency improvements and vehicle reductions and, you know, it's all very. When you look at what would what would have to happen to meet the goals, it's pretty uh sobering.
So, just being a dummy, if I'm looking at the potential wind energy resource areas for Heinsburg. The teal colored, dark teal colored or green colored base wind potential areas. For high wind potential for commercial generation and the possible, the presence of possible state constraints.
Mm-hmm.
So it's potentially a high wind area and it's also.
High constraint.
High constraints.
The difference between the teal and the purple, they're both the teal and the purple, I believe. Have the same potential for wind generation. Exactly, it's just that the purple has no state constraints and the teal has state, some state constraints.
What's the purple one right there that's got the?
That's spot number one.
This is wind?
You know what I'm talking about right there?
Purple dot right in the middle of this.
The road to the right of that purple dot is Piet Meadow, so that looks like um.
Rocky Martin's road.
Rocky Martin's house, yeah, it looks like Rocky Martin's.
Maybe he has a windmill right there. They're just accepting the uh the obvious. I wonder if Rocky's seen that? It's like on the solar map, you guys, I'm at the end of a little road. You know, our little road, and we have a PV array on on our roof. Um and there's a little, little red flick. Right where our house is.
Right, right at the end of the road.
I think they just did some aerial photography and said, what the heck, we're done there.
I will tell you that on the solar map, I've already given them feedback that that. A lot of these red areas are in places where you're just never gonna see. Large-scale ground-mounted solar, you you see a lot of red at the North Road, Richmond Road intersection.
Yeah.
Um you see a lot of red uh. Where else do you see a lot of red? Well, you see a lot of red up in the hills.
Yeah.
You know, uh and and you're just never gonna see big solar arrays up up in those core forested areas. Um.
They missed my solar panels.
I know, but you're you're sort of, you've been there so long, they forgot.
Yeah, that's why. That's why these maps show where those lines run and unfortunately if.
I just thought it was funny that.
If you're if you're not uh fully in favor of that.
Your face directly south?
The potential for a big wind farm up on that hill is, you know, there's power in in proximity.
You've got a little yellow around you there.
Yeah, I have yellow around me.
That's why they wanna do the solar.
Some possible constraints.
Rocky's got purple solar too.
Let's see. What does white mean, you guys, on the solar map?
So, good question. White means um no constraints and not a prime spot for solar. Which is why that McGee Hill Road solar array, the 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 one big solar proposal we've had in town is funny cuz it's in a white spot.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's that's way up at the top of the map, isn't it, on the top right there?
Yeah.
There's a high transmission line going through there.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And and this solar, proposed solar is on the north side of McGee Hill Road.
Right in that white spot.
Yes. And the reason is because if you could, if you could take all the constraints off the map and just show where the s- where the state says there's. Good potential for solar, um it's all just south-facing slopes.
Yeah.
So that that's that's why. I think so, yeah, that when I asked, that's what that's what I was told, it doesn't have to do with actual land cover, it's just.
How come they don't do like the wildlife habitat and stuff?
They do.
But they don't do it accurately.
It just costs so much money.
Oh, yeah, I mean, mapping all the wildlife habitat out there is.
So they want the developers to do it?
On a on a site-by-site basis, yeah.
So, the the McGee Hill Road stuff is.
Right there.
Yeah, there.
Yep. So we're, I'm working with their, with the staff person at the RPC to. Introduce some amount of of allowance for solar, at least in areas not mapped as as. Having solar potential, recognizing that, you know, there is one here in Heinsburg or will be and.
Yeah. And this map is showing, by the way, by symbol, that our three-phase power comes down. Uh to the intersection of where North Road hits.
One sixteen.
Yeah.
Why did it, why did we bring three-phase, why did they bring three-phase to there, what's?
I don't, I don't know why it why it was brought down to there.
But there's nothing, there's no industry right there that might use.
It needs to be brought down past cases.
Needs to keep going south, that's what you would suggest.
They were working on it, but I don't know what's happening off the.
Alex, is there, I mean.
It doesn't really say per town, all all of these uh thermal energy use, uh all these use charts for transportation and.
Mm-hmm.
Municipal, is this specific to Heinsburg, is this an attempt to?
Yes, this is all just Heinsburg.
Okay.
And if you, if there's a website in in the email I sent you guys to a a web link to the. The Regional Planning Commission website that has the same template for every other town, so you can see what Bolton's targets are.
Mm-hmm.
Um Burlington's or what have you.
Okay.
These these.
The tables, yeah.
Those tables are. Kinda interesting, we're talking about CBU, it's like right where the building is is prime source.
So that's all I really wanted to do with you guys tonight, is pass it out, get your minds turning a little bit, and then, you know, feel free to. Pepper me with questions between now and the next meeting, and then I'll I'll try to prep. Some discussion points for in your packet for the next meeting, eh based in part on what the Energy Committee has to say.
So right away, how how we deal with possible constraints and then.
Right.
And who gets credit?
You know, are we making sure that we're doing this for Vermont and not for Connecticut or Massachusetts or? Somebody else?
So Jeff, you're saying that's CBU?
Right, but if we have to, i- i- if we have to do it for the world and then Vermont too, a second time, we're in trouble.
That's actually a good way to put it. That if we're doing this for the greater good, but but by doing it, we're serving the requirements of Massachusetts greater good. And we have to do it dubbed twice over to then do Vermont share, it's kinda like, what happened there?
You're definitely not making it easy to do it at all, really, I don't think.
Not as easy as you would like, huh?
Although I'm I'm still amazed at the number of of solar, wind, I don't see as much of, but. Just bike down the mountain road this morning and. Uh just over last year, there's just a a host of new solar installations all over the place. Mostly ground-mounted, independent of the house, they look like community systems often.
Over fifty thousand dollars.
All right, di- did you put it on your barn, did you end up going ahead?
No, I put mine out in my pasture.
Your barn couldn't take it?
It was too shady.
Oh, too shady, not not.
Maple trees, and I wasn't cutting maple trees.
Okay.
That are putting in solar installs and companies are steering them towards ground-mounted, you know, fixed stuff.
Fixed fixed stuff, yeah.
Well, it's easier to keep the snow off and it's.
Yeah.
You know, and then if your roof needs to be replaced.
Yeah, yeah, it's really the, uh at least as far as this level of planning, it's it's the urban. Uh municipalities like Burlington, Winuski, that just have to have rooftop solar as part of their plan. Cuz they they don't have places to do ground-mounted, not very many anyways. Okay, very good.
Still amazes me though, this is the northeast part of the country.
Is the solar panels that are out by energy?
In the entire country, northwest, northeast. And people are doing solar everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they legislate against it in Arizona.
How does that make sense?
Have you ever been over through New York where all this?
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty cool.
Go out to the Caspade Peninsula, big solar farms, I mean, uh wind farms out there. I don't know how many, uh a couple of dozen easily.
Well, I was just like in Uganda, poor, I mean, Jesus. Amazing how much solar is, but a lot of places don't have any electricity, so.
Right.
This is their option.
They gotta make it themselves.
New infrastructure system, so.
When we were in.
The batteries are coming.
Rockport, there are.
Durbans out on Vinyl Haven.
Almost, no, in almost in the village.
Oh, really?
I mean, as you're driving in on one twenty-seven that comes ends at Rockport, there are three of these mega. Generators, you know, three three prop generators, and I I asked people there, was was there an issue about this? Was there a lot of discussion? No, I don't remember anything, nobody seemed to object to them, and they're. But this is, this is surrounded by housing.
Yeah.
Multi-family housing, apartments, high-end housing, Rockport is not a a down-and-out town.
Right.
Very well off-town and.
That on Lake Champlain on in say Shelburne.
Yeah, yeah.
Coast of Nantucket, didn't fly there.
Right, there are places that didn't, but somehow.
Hey, minutes for.
I did not see anything that needed to be changed.
Okay. I have a couple of minor like directional things, for example, at the last paragraph in page one. Uh we had this issue of trying to refer to a place on a map that you can't see in words, and so it says, uh. Alex W offered to clarify the history of the future community facility identified on the map by a brown section. And and it was saying that the future commu- community facility labeled Patrick Brook, well, that wasn't Patrick Brook, it was. It was south of the Patrick Brook label, so I was just gonna introduce south of the Patrick Brook label, but also suggest that we attach the map. To these minutes, just like we we did the April twenty-six minutes.
It maybe also suggests that we ought to use some kind of identification system on that official map.
That's been clarified by by several commissioners, yes, we need to have everything numbered.
Right.
Uh.
Sorry.
Circles and arrows.
So I had a couple of corrections like that, but nothing major. Anybody else?
I didn't, I read it, it seemed.
Do we have motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Who was that, Dennis?
Epstein, I wasn't here.
No, we don't have a court, man.
Vote with the majority, it's okay.
All right, minutes, any new business, Alex?
You had a couple.
Uh, a couple things, the the select board review schedule for the town plan changed. Uh so, um they got a little behind, so their two, their next meeting in June. They will work on the last two chapters, seven and eight, transportation chapter and the energy chapter. Um and then if that goes well, then their second meeting in June will be the one where I need to make all the changes they've asked for. And they'll review those changes then in the hopes of going to a public hearing uh later in July. So just know that the sched- the schedule's been pushed out a little bit. Um we did hire zoning administrator Suzanne Montegna, oh, the person you recommended was was appo- was appointed, she starts next week. And the town administrator transition has has happened or is is happening now. And the town administrator transition has has happened or is is happening now. Tre- uh, today was actually Trevor's last day in the office. Um, so the search has o- opened, um Renee, well Renee Marshall will be serving as interim town administrator. Trevor is actually gonna stay on and uh work in a very part-time capacity supporting Renee. I think he'll be doing a lot of that from home, um, you know, shuffling paperwork and di- digital paperwork and the like. Uh, I believe the select board plans to form a committee like they've done the last two times and. That'll, that'll be happening shortly, I was just double-checking to see the job ad when they wanna have. Applications in by, I hope it is, but I haven't, I actually haven't looked, so I thought I'd do that right now, um.
So that's like in the free press, or no, they don't use the.
Seven days, they're gonna do it in seven days, um, as well as a variety of online resources that um. That are specific to town managers and town administrators. And yes, it is up on the website, so please email, cover letter, resume, at least three references, no later than June twenty-third.
So that if someone is looking at the Heinsburg website.
They will see it there as well, yeah, I've already talked to one person who's inquiring for a friend, so. Words, words on the street, words out, uh, I thought I had some other little thing for you guys too.
Now the select board is meeting on Thursdays.
Correct, for the summer. Um. Yeah, I guess that was it.
All right. Motion adjourned. So moved. So as far as you know, next meeting, everybody's scheduled to be here?